Yeah.
That's what my brain goes.
Highlights.
Oh, they wouldn't have any of them.
Oh, okay.
Danny, I would.
I get. I get it.
I'm glad for Brandy to crawl up.
Civil commitments, what is that?
All right.
I don't know if I go down. Oh, civil commitments.
All right, everyone, good morning. If you'll rise and run in the bloods, please.
One allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Under God.
And visible with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, we'll call the June sixth already. Meeker County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And we will open a public comment period. And the most public guy I know is in the crowds. If he'd like to speak to us, that'd be great, Dean, if you'll step up.
Uh, thank you. Great, uh, great to be here today. Uh, it's, you mentioned June sixth, I'm reminded it's the anniversary of my high school graduation, like twenty-five, thirty years ago, I can remember what it was.
Similar to D-Day happened.
Yeah, well.
Couldn't resist.
All right. Just wanna give a, uh, quick, uh, summary of the legislative session, uh, try to be a little more specific about how it impacts, uh, Meeker County and Litchfield. And, uh, then if you have any questions or comments, so, uh, session ended on time, no special session, although might be something coming up later on, uh, on a more minor issue, but anyway, first year of the biennium is the budget. And we had a very unusual year in that, uh, we had a budget surplus of around eighteen billion dollars. And so it was, uh, you know, what to do with the surplus? Easy answer to that question from the majority, spend it. And so, uh, we, we spent the surplus and we went beyond that, uh, because two-thirds of the surplus was one-time money. And we made some, um, pro- programmatic, uh, uh, parts to the budget which increased it. So in other words, um, ongoing funding. So we used part of the surplus for ongoing funding. And that is why we had to increase fees and taxes about nine billion dollars. So eighteen billion dollar surplus, increased taxes, nine billion, we wind up with a bu- a budget increase of nearly forty percent from fifty-two billion to s- seventy-two billion dollars. Uh, and, uh, that's where we are right now. Uh, you know, there were certainly some good things that needed funding, um, but, uh, some of the programs that we, uh, have now implemented for the future, uh, you know, we have at least, uh, my caucus had some, some questions about. So, one of the, you know, also a lot of, uh, items in the, that we passed that in terms of policy, uh, that, you know, are also questionable, but will have long-time impact. Regarding what I feel were successes, I think, uh, we did a veterans bill, uh, we did, uh, a capital investment bonding bill, uh, that's what I work on. I'm the Republican lead on that committee. And, uh, we, uh, passed a record amount, uh, two-point-six billion dollars in, uh, capital investment bonding. Normally, the second year of the biennium, in other words, when we come back in this next session, that is the bonding year. But that's kind of gone haywire over the years because the last time, when I chaired in twenty-eighteen, the, the capital investment committee, we did a bill. From twenty-eighteen until a couple of weeks ago, uh, we had done one bonding bill. Uh, where it's supposed to be every other year of the biennium, it was becoming every other biennium, uh, for a lot of, a lot of reasons. But anyway, uh, we had done one bonding bill since twenty-eighteen and therefore, yeah, two-point-six billion is a lot of, a lot of money, but, uh, keep it in the context that we did no bonding bill in the last biennium. So in essence, we're trying to make up some ground. Uh, there are a lot of needs in the state of Minnesota and a lot of requests. We had, uh, five, six billion dollars in requests, uh, over that two-point-six billion that we did. One hundred, uh, one-point-five billion of it was general obligation bonds. And for that, a supermajority is required, so sixty percent, meaning, uh, they in the House had to have at least Republican, uh, eleven Republicans vote for it, or they could not pass the bill. Uh, in the end, they received twenty-seven Republican votes. So this is a bill that by its nature has to be bipartisan. You have to work together or you can't do a general obligation bonding bill. All the other bills are, you know, simple majority, and so the, the majority party, uh, could just pretty much do whatever they wanted. And they pretty much did whatever they wanted throughout the session, except they couldn't in bonding. They also wanted to do cash. The cash part is, uh, a simple majority. And so you have the one-point-five billion in, uh, GO and one-point-one billion in cash. And, uh, so it became quite an adventure. It, you know, I, I've been working on this for nearly three years, uh, before it, it passed. But, uh, in terms of what that meant here, well, I should back up just a little bit. Uh, you know, in terms of, of the budget, uh, we did do, um, uh, local government aid for our cities, increases there, uh, county aid, I was talking with, uh, Andrew before, received a significant boost for county aid, uh, so those are important things that needed to be done and, uh, and we could support. Uh, in the capital investment bonding, I use that capital investment bonding because, again, the bonding is the GO, the capital investment, um, using that term to describe the cash. And, uh, in this area, uh, we had, uh, one, uh, one million dollars for the, uh, the wellness center in Litchfield. Five million dollars for First District, dealing with the wastewater treatment, uh, facility, the, actually the pretreatment that they want to do with, at First District. And, uh, two million, twenty-five thousand for the building facades in downtown Litchfield in the historic district. We have a problem there with, uh, bricks falling off these old buildings. And, uh, I wanted to see that the facades are, are restored and maintained. Four million dollars for a wastewater treatment plant in, uh, Lake Lilian, which is now part of my district. We put a record amount into PFA funding, PFA, the Public Facilities Authority. Uh, that's the water towers, the clean water, wastewater, those types of projects come from PFA, uh, three-hundred-and-eighty-one million dollars. And so, uh, we don't earmark, although some were earmarked, but with all the money we put into that account, uh, obviously the requests can go farther down the list. And, uh, PFA has a, a list of funding. And, uh, we really, uh, believe that's a, a very important thing for greater Minnesota, to adequately fund PFA. Local roads and bridges, uh, about a hundred-and-seventy million dollars in that category. Uh, that also impacts greater Minnesota, um, and we put a, uh, a special, uh, addition in that for, uh, five million for township roads. Also, I think tho- those are the, the bonding highlights. Some other things, uh, that might impact a little bit. Working with Sheriff Cruz, uh, who testified on this bill, uh, we, uh, passed, um, my bill on, on legislation to, uh, aid, uh, in the cost of extradition of probationary individuals who need to be brought back. Uh, that was a big hit to, uh, county sheriff budgets. And so this will, will help out that, they, uh, should now be reimbursed for extradition. In turn, staying on the, uh, the area of public safety, uh, a concern we have, and I was, uh, talking with, uh, County Attorney Schiefelbein about this, uh, there are eight thousand people currently, I mean roughly, uh, uh, held in, or detained in, in Minnesota correctional facilities, about eight thousand. Uh, six hundred of them are lifers, seven thousand four hundred therefore are eligible for release at some point. It has been, uh, that they serve about two-thirds of their sentence before they are released. And now it's, um, uh, half their sentence. So a lot of folks who committed crimes, violent crimes or whatever, uh, will now be eligible to be released, uh, when half of their term is served. Another item impacting, uh, Meeker County, uh, I sponsored a bill to allow for a trail to be built from, um, loose, the loose line trail to Greenleaf. The purpose of that, uh, it just seemed logical to me. It could certainly boost Greenleaf and the local economy, but also, uh, a, a destination from the Twin Cities where the loose line starts to Greenleaf, I think, uh, just made sense. So also, uh, on a unrelated topic, uh, I want to thank, uh, Meeker County for their cooperation with my little motion picture endeavor. Uh, it, uh, came out last week, we had about eleven hundred views, uh, over eight hundred at the Hollywood. And, uh, one more shot at it on Thursday night, if, if anyone is interested, uh, we have, uh, one of the stars of the movie right here in front of me.
Yeah.
Uh, but, uh, no, it, uh, it then will go to streaming in July and, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll have a little wider theatrical release and DVDs later on. So I think I hit the highlights there and, uh, don't want to take up too much time. Any questions or comments or anything?
Everybody got anything? I was gonna ask you two, two questions, really, one on budget. It wasn't very many years ago, we were less than forty billion on annual budget.
No.
Four years ago?
Oh, I think when I took office, it was under twenty.
Yeah.
Or ma- maybe more than that, but i- in the twenties.
But just in the last couple of years, they're.
Yeah.
You know, if we ain't careful, we're gonna be at fifty-billion-dollar budget and that's.
We blew right by that.
So that's concerning. Um, and the other one was on, on probation, um, uh, on, on AMC, I'm the Public Safety Policy Chair, and they were working, uh, we had a resolution all the county signed on to for, uh, uh, probation funding in that formula with DOC and county probation. And, uh, they made some changes and it's, I mean, but we needed about sixty million and I think we ended up at forty-three, so, um, were, were you involved in any of that? Or, and what I'm, what I'm getting at is what, what you're describing is we're putting more pressure on probation continually on that system because we don't want to incarcerate. And yet, we were dead last in the nation in funding probation systems until this year. And I don't know where it's gonna land, that's when we get done, but that's something that's gonna have to continually be on the radar, is what I'm getting at.
Uh, yes, it will be. Uh, you know, I had, uh, folks come in and talk to me about this in my office. I, I certainly supported doing more for this, uh, and, uh, I'm, I'm glad that there were improvements made, there's more that needs to be done, but, uh, there seemed to be general satisfaction that we'd gotten something done in this regard.
Yeah, I, I mean, AMC obviously was happy with changes, but I'm, I'm just wanting to keep my finger on the pulse there a little bit, that moving forward, we're gonna have to continue to address, especially if we continue to put pressure on, you know, the number of participants in the system and.
Right.
Fund less.
Well, we, we have to fund those things that, that need to be fun- funded. And, uh, you know, certainly, uh, this is one of them, I, but we, we can't get carried away. Uh, yes, we, we gave more funding to schools, uh, two-point-two billion dollars more. But then we did sixty-five mandates on the schools, many of them unfunded. And so while our school districts are getting more money, uh, they are now being required to pay for programs that we're not funding, so they have to increase, uh, local levies or dip into their general funds to do that. And, uh, so we've created some problems as well for our local school districts.
Representative Verdel, I want to thank you because, uh, I'm on the Transportation and Infrastructure for AMC. And many of the things that we were, many of our goals were addressed this time and that went well. But I find it always interesting, and I am so thankful for Meeker Cooperative and what they did was vibrant for us, but we go to these meetings in all these counties.
Broadband.
Oh, broadband, broadband, broadband. So, um, I know that's a tough one though, because it's different in every part of the state. But how much do you recall was put towards broadband this time?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't.
If you don't, that's fine.
But I know that we did significantly, uh, add, add to the broadband fund.
Okay.
Goes in the agriculture bill, as I recall.
Okay.
It's, uh, never quite enough, but we did more.
So in other words, you're saying I'm probably still gonna be hearing it at the meetings?
Probably. But we're, we're getting there, I mean, it's, uh, there was, again, I know a lot of money put into it.
It does exist, because my daughter is out west in the whole week and there's, there is no internet out there whatsoever. Twenty different, but you can't find anybody, huh, just a dead zone, so.
But you know, it's, it's tough being in the minority when, you know, these policy things are coming and, you know, funding is exploding and really can't do much about it. That's why I'm grateful that in capital investment bonding, uh, I was able to, uh, you know, have some impact and, and get some things done. Actually, I did get fifteen bills passed or pieces of legislation, which is fairly, uh, abnormal for, uh, someone in the minority, but it worked out.
Good.
Julie, you got anything?
All right.
That's it, Dean, thanks for coming in, appreciate it.
Thank you, and, uh, you know, anytime you have, uh, questions or whatever, feel free to contact me. If you want me in again, just let me know.
All right.
Thank you.
Stay warm. All right. Moving on, we have, uh, June sixth board meeting agenda.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the agenda as printed.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second?
I have, yeah, I have one.
Okay, well, let me, look, I got a second by Commissioner Schiefelbein, so I got that on the record. All right, Julie, you got a question?
There was one typo, um, at the bottom of page one, for acceptance of the drone donation. What did we determine, Andrew, it was supposed to be two-fifty instead of five-hundred?
That's correct.
So would that need to be an amendment then, or a correction?
It doesn't need to be, it'll be reflected properly in the minutes.
In the, okay.
All right. Yeah, when our question's answered here, all in favor of the board meeting agenda, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Uh, consent agenda, Andrew, would you walk us through those items, please?
So we have approval of the May sixteenth board meeting minutes, the social services county and hospital accounts payable. Approval of Resolution twenty-two-three-eighteen authorizing the acceptance of four-fifteen South Ramsey Avenue. Resolution twenty-two-three-nineteen, which is the DNR Stonemobile Trails Assistance Program. Temporary on-sale licenses for the American Legion for August third through sixth and September first through third. Approval of quotes for Cisco switches. Approval of federal boating safety patrol contract agreement. Acceptance of the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar donation for the drone program. Acceptance of a thousand-dollar donation for the crime victim services program from Ucap. That is the consent agenda.
All right. Is there any questions, any consent agenda? Hearing none, I'd.
There was one on, on the payables, Barb. What was that one for, I think it was RF electricians or something? There's a fair amount of money, I was wondering what we're doing, what kind of work we're doing.
It's fair amount.
D, DNF.
DNF, like twenty-seven thousand, something like that. I was just curious what that was for.
I'd have to dig into that.
You'd have to dig into it.
Okay, 'cause that's like.
Not my head item.
I don't remember it all, we'll, we'll email you.
Okay, 'cause that's like, if we're doing stuff, I was like, I hope we're not doing stuff and then.
Nothing that would be impacted by the building project.
Notice that, too. Yep.
I'd add a question, I, I referred to Andrew and others, bring it up. The loan payment to the Minnesota Control Agency, we had two payments and interest. And I, I was curious as to what that was for.
Landfill?
I can answer that. Normally, they would run through auditors, but because they were due June first, um, they ran them in through commissioners and that is our septic loan program. And that's the repayment schedule for the septic loan assessment program.
Okay.
Well, as long as we're on bills, I asked Phil already yesterday, because I ran into him, but there was twenty-seven thousand in there for cutting edges, so that jumped out at me. You got all our bill questions answered?
I, I talked to Barb ahead of time, so I, I had all of those answered. We're still looking at a couple. And Paul, you're here, the next chapter, technology, it was a huge chunk, two-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand dollars for that. I, I've always questioned a couple of those, contemplating that we pay ahead. Uh, some of these expenses haven't even been encumbered yet, but we pay through the end of the year. And that, that was a big number that jumped out at me, could you address that?
Sure, um, uh, that is for caseworks, our electronic document platform that we're moving towards. And so it's not for a full year, it's actually for the product that we're purchasing and implementing with the, uh, start date of next week being fully, um, implemented within our agency. So we're paying as, as we go for each product. So we paid one for our ACE product, which is a version for our accounting software. Then I believe we had another bill which was for our eligibility determination teams, uh, product. And then the next piece of this is going to be for our social services product, um, which we, I think, starting Monday.
Will this be an ongoing expense?
That large number will not.
Okay.
But we will have a maintenance for our licenses that will be an ongoing expense. When we were working with application extender, ISC Network, um, they had an operation expense too, and it's going to be similar for caseworks as our annual maintenance. So I think it was right around forty-five to fifty thousand.
Okay.
Well, Mark, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact numbers.
There were about half a dozen or so bills attached, but the total came to two-hundred-and-thirty-two.
Yeah, part of, part of that is that we will have a administrative reimbursement for the cost of this, so we will be receiving about thirty percent back in administrative reimbursements, which we should probably start seeing in the fourth quarter of this year.
Because it went through to the end of the year, and I thought, we're paying for something before we have the product, but.
No, we'll have it on Monday.
Okay. All right, that was answered, and that was answered, and that was answered.
All right.
My questions.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Paul on consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Uh, second by Julie. Any further discussion or questions?
All the discussion is a thank you to Custom Products for their donation and.
Yeah.
Ucap's donation.
Yes. Um, and then we have resolutions in there, so Cory, will you take the roll, please?
Commissioner Brodesson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes. All right, and then we'll move on. I believe we're going to have to, uh, we've got a nine o'clock hard line on a ditch, so we'll have to, uh, jump ahead to that, I think.
Yeah.
Is Kilda connected?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Get right up in front.
So we'll recess as county board and convene as county ditch authority. It's on public hearing on County Ditch Thirty-five.
We want an audio test, we have a legal consult. Gail on line?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Gail.
Perfect.
Excellent.
And we have Ron in person. And Steve, I think Gail will just take the lead.
All right, Gail, if you want to take over and walk us through.
Yeah, thanks Chairman and, and board members and members of the public. So this is a continued public hearing on a petition to remove property from County Ditch Thirty-five. The initial hearing was held previously, at that hearing, the petitioners presented their case for why their property should be removed from the benefited area of County Ditch Thirty-five. Um, the board opened the floor for public comments. Uh, there were not public comments, but we did give a report from Ron Ringquist showing that, uh, based on what the petitioners engineer, bar engineering, had shown that the property still does in, on occasion, have water that leaves the property and uses County Ditch Thirty-five as an outlet. Um, the board deliberated and decided to continue the public hearing to today's date in order to allow time for Ron to do an analysis of what the benefits of this property would be if the system had gone through a redetermination of benefits. Uh, the board wanted to see as, as a compromise based on some of the history, uh, what a reduction in benefits to this property would look like. So for today's hearing, Ron's gonna present his report and his recommendation on benefits. Um, then it's the, the prerogative of the chair as to whether or not he wants to open the floor again for public comments. Following that, the board will then deliberate the information it received. And if it is ready to make a decision, we do have a set of draft findings that we can review at that time. So, Mr. Chairman, do you or any other, uh, commissioners have questions for me about the, the purpose of the continued hearing for today?
Any other members here? I do not, Gail, looks like we're good.
Then I think we can move on to Ron, Mr. Chair.
All right, Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as you requested, I did look at this particular property and gave considerations to the current easement, as if we were going to do a redetermination of benefits on the entire system. I did not change benefit classifications, because in order to be equal to what was done in nineteen ninety-four, I would have had to done that throughout the entire system. And the purpose of this isn't to redetermine the benefits, it's just to look at what would the benefits be if this easement would have been in place at that time? So typically, when I look at redeterminations of benefits, it's a comparison of what the property would be like without alteration and without artificial drainage versus that that would be there given the outlet is in place. Uh, part of that consideration then is the highest and best use considerations, and the easement does alter that. But the property, as, as the records indicate, or as the aerial photography indicates, it typically was mostly farmed after the ditch construction. And in the nineteen thirty-eight photo, you can see that there's just one very small wet spot. The wetlands began to reclaim themselves as you went through nineteen fifty-five and nineteen ninety-one photos. They were wet enough that at the time, the property was enrolled in CRP, that certain areas of the property were not allowed to be enrolled because they didn't meet the criteria. And so I assumed that those areas were the wetland acres that, uh, were identified on the viewer's report from nineteen ninety-four. And then everything was enrolled into the permanent easement except for approximately two and a half acres. So we left that as being benefited, as if it was in the original. My recommendation for reduction is, is that the wetlands, because they no longer can be drained or altered, should not be benefited under the current easement. And then there's an area around those, what's called scope and effect, that cannot be artificially drained. And so I removed the benefits from those acres as well. So my recommendation would have been to remove the eight acres of what they called A-minuses, and those were the wetland acres. Remove six acres surrounding those that could not be artificially drained. And that left about seven acres that they classified as B acres, meaning that they were wetland. And that left about seven acres that they classified as B acres, meaning that they were wetland ham pasture. And would not have qualified for compensation under the rem easement if they hadn't been altered or drained. So I left those as benefited from the original construction of the system, and then I left the two and a half acres of upland. And if that change, it reduces the benefits. That are currently there are, the net benefits are thirty-seven hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty cents. That would reduce the benefits to fourteen hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-five percent cents. Which is about a sixty percent reduction in what they are currently paying. I don't feel that there is zero benefit to the property. I think that the wetlands that could have been drained or were drained. And qualified for compensation did benefit, because otherwise it would not have been compensated for. I know there were wetland issues, but that's separate from the value that the ditch provided.
All right. Any questions for Ron, the board? All right, Ron, thank you.
And I think we should have Gail address the findings in order, if you're at that point, or public comment.
Uh, is there anybody that wants to comment from the public on Thirty-Five? Doesn't look like it, so then, Gail, would you, uh, like to comment on the findings?
Yeah, thanks, uh, Mr. Chair. So in the board packet, there are draft findings in order. That were prepared consistent with the original hearing, and also consistent with the report we knew the board would be receiving today from Mr. Ringquist. So it looks like those are being awesome pulled up on screen. The, uh, draft findings in order, uh, work to deny the petition. In part, because the petition requested to remove all the benefited acres from the petitioner's property. And so the effect of the order would be to deny that portion of the petitioner's request. But then to grant the portion of the petitioner's request to remove all but nine-point-five benefited acres. Of petitioner's property. That's the total leftover acres, as Mr. Ringquist explained. That he believes are still benefited by County Ditch Thirty-Five. In addition to removing all but those nine-point-five acres. Paragraph C of the order also reduces the benefits dollar amount for those nine-point-five acres. To one-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. That's not an assessment, that's just the value assigned to those nine-point-five acres. That would be equated by your auditor to a percent of the entire benefits of the system. And that will then, percentage will be used for apportioning future operation maintenance and repair costs of County Ditch Thirty-Five. In paragraph D of the order, uh, we just have an instruction to your auditor to revise the drainage system records. To reflect the reduction in drainage system benefits upon expiration of all applicable appeals periods. This order is appealable within thirty days to district court. And so no changes will be made by your auditor to the official drainage system records until those thirty-day appeal period has expired. Um, we also note in paragraph E that the removal of acres does not affect, um, any current costs on the system. But that those acres removed shall not be affected by the drainage system in any later repair proceeding. So only the nine-point-five acres would be subject to assessment for future repair orders or levies. And then finally, in paragraph F, um, as a standard for these type of proceedings where the benefit of the proceeding is to the petitioner. The order is contingent on the petitioner paying all costs associated with these proceedings, which would include. The cost for the hearing notices, the viewing costs, the legal fees, and any other administrative costs. Your auditor would put those together and certify those to petitioner, um, for payment before this order would go into effect. The findings are mostly procedural, um, but in paragraph twenty-one, just above the order. Just, uh, have the key findings for the board that the petition is valid for the purposes of the Drainage Code, Section one oh three E, point eight oh five. A finding that all procedural and notice requirements of the statute were met. Um, a finding that although the waters from petitioner's property have been reduced, they have not been entirely diverted from County Ditch. Thirty-five, and as the barns during report showed, petitioner's property still regularly uses County Ditch Thirty-Five. But we noted that it's to a lesser degree than the most recent redetermination of benefits would have assigned for this property. Um, we've noted that the land use has changed regarding the permanent wetland conservation easement, which reduces the benefit. That County Ditch Thirty-Five provides to the property. And then a final finding that reducing the benefits to petitioner's property will not prejudice the property owners and property remaining in the system. Mr. Chair, if there's questions on the draft findings in order, I can take those now. Um, otherwise, what we're looking for is a motion from the board to approve the draft findings in order. And then that motion will be voted on by roll call vote.
All right, thanks, Gail. Is there any questions for Gail from the board?
I have three. Great. Um, as we look at the pictures, the ditch runs through the property. So there is still water coming into and available to leave the property. So it still is a portion of this ditch where there's an incoming and an outgoing, correct?
The ditch system is a tile that does provide an outlet to the property. And yes, there are contributing properties above this that flow through the property and then outlet into the ditch system.
So this isn't like the end?
The ditch doesn't run through the property, but the water does.
Okay. Um, my next question, is the property in, did I read somewhere a CREP program?
Yeah, it's Crep.
The, the Crep program?
It's in the Crep program. I noticed I had an extra C in there.
Okay.
Prior to that, it was in CRP.
Okay.
Federal program, Crep is the state added compensation to make it permanent instead of the ten or fifteen years of the CRP program.
And does the property owner receive income from having it in these programs?
Yes, he receives the CRP payments until that contract expires and he received a one-time payment from the Crep from the state. To make that fifteen-year easement into a permanent easement. So he did get compensated for those acres.
And after that, nothing, eventually nothing, no.
Yeah, af- af- after, after that, it would be the value of the wildlife or the hunting app. Because the, the land use is permanently restricted to its wildlife, uh, configuration.
The part that's being taken away from the ditch now, will the property owner need to maintain this on their own? Like making sure trees don't grow up and issues like?
That is part of the Crep agreement.
Okay.
That is the maintenance of the property. They're supposed to maintain it in prairie, but that isn't well enforced, I don't think.
Sure. The, the tree issues and such, they like to have to maintain those. Okay, and everybody's aware of all of that and?
Should be.
Those are my questions.
All right. Hold on, I just had a tile. The tile that is in question here around this property that, is there? Is that, is that entirely encompassed in this property, or is it going to neighboring, finding property?
It ends on this property.
But, uh, what I'm getting at is, does the neighbor's water flow into that tile? Okay.
It's been plugged for four years.
Okay.
Coming hasn't been needed.
Just so.
By the videos on a dug deep on ditch, it drained because the tile was plugged.
Gotcha, all right.
The surface water's.
It's always one, yeah, how many peoples are impacted or.
Yeah, yeah.
Got contributing factors, so, that's, that's all the clarification I need. Now I'd look for a motion, Commissioner Johnson, if you're so eager.
Move to, no. First time. Move to adopt the findings in order in the matter of removal of property from Meeker County Ditch Thirty-Five by the Smith Investment Group.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
So, second by Commissioner Schiefelbein, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredeis?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes. All right, motion carried, next item.
The next item will be to, um, request to set the public hearing for County Ditch Forty-nine. We have a petition for impound reroute and diverting of Meeker County Forty-nine presented by U.S. Fish and Wildlife. And we also are to appoint an engineer in your board packet. When this went out, for some reason I got the draft, we post-reborged instead of the original, but. Change, and so we want to have a recommendation that that hearing be set for August first, nine AM or thereafter, as allowed on the agenda. So we are setting the public hearing today and appointing our engineer. I would like to have you appoint Joe Lewis or Houston Engineer. If you wanna put Joe Lewis in the motion, that'd be great.
All right, uh, yes, uh, in the, your board packet, it's, uh, July eighteenth at nine AM. That's actually August first, twenty-twenty-three at nine AM on the public hearing. And then appointing Joe Lewis of Houston Engineering, so that would be the, the, uh, in your RBA changes. Any other questions for Barb on this one? Would entertain.
Like to entertain, okay, I'll, I'll give it a try here. I move to set a public hearing to consider petition to impound, reroute, and divert Meeker County Ditch Forty-nine. For August first, twenty-twenty-three at nine AM, or thereafter, as allowed on the agenda. In the commissioner's meeting room, Meeker County Courthouse, Litchfield, Minnesota, and appointment of Joe Lewis of Houston Engineering, Inc. As engineer for this project.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bredeis.
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Schiefelbein, are any further discussions on ditch forty-nine? Hearing none. Man, this is not a, do I need, this is not a resolution.
I think it's just a motion.
Yep.
Just a voice vote, it's okay.
Thanks, Gail. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. There you go.
Thank you, Gail.
Thanks, Gail.
Thanks, Board.
Yep, thanks.
I don't know if you wanna get those guys back up, that were, if you wanted to ditch, uh, the ditch loans, it's very simple, quick, it's up to you.
Paul, let's do that, cause then, let's do that and then we'll reconvene, all right.
Okay, so in the, um, eyes of collection from the May tax statements, we were able to retire a few more ditch loans. So I've outlined how many ditches fifteen, seventeen, nineteen, and thirty-six, one with judicial one seventeen and fifty-two. So the motion would be to transfer seventy-four thousand back to the revenue funds from ditch. And pay the interest that has accumulated since either taking these loans or last payment of three thousand five hundred eighteen six.
All right, everybody with, um, what Barb's explaining here, I would, uh. Is there any further questions on these loans, retirement? I would look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve transferring funds from ditch to revenue to retire loans for County Ditches fifteen, seventeen, nineteen. Thirty-six and joint ditches, one seventeen and fifty-two, in the amount of seventy-four thousand. Plus interest of three thousand five hundred and eight dollars and eighty-six cents retro to June first of twenty-twenty-three.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Bredeis.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schiefelbein. Any further discussion on ditch loans to revenue? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. U.S. Fish and Wildlife, we're sorry to make you wait. Thanks for cooperating.
Steve, would you adjourn?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I need to adjourn as County Ditch Authority and we'll reconvene as the County Board. And now, U.S. Fish and Wildlife.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I'm Scott Blue, project leader for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, uh, located here in Litchfield.
My name is Blake Nysley, I'm a realty specialist with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And we're here today to present three easements for certification. Uh, a wetland easement with Michael and Constance Hamm, a wetland easement with David and Melissa Felt. And a habitat easement with David and Melissa Felt. Did everyone receive the information packet with, uh. The maps of these areas that we're considering?
Yeah.
Yep.
So the, the wetland easements cover just the wetland basin and restrict the wetlands from draining, filling, level, and burning. The habitat easement covers the wetland, plus the uplands must stay in native vegetation. Were there any questions or concerns with?
So these are permanent easements and down the road, if something happens to these people. And it's perpetual, it, it just goes on?
Stays with the land. Correct, they're perpetual easements.
Any questions on, which one is this, just for identification, so we're all?
That map is all three of them, they're all kind of the same cluster there. So the, the red triangle is the Felt Wetland Easement. The blue area is the Felt Habitat Easement, and the green area would be the, the Hamm Wetland Easement.
Oh, gotcha.
How, how will these properties then be used? Is this for public, public use, um?
No, it'll stay in private ownership. It, uh, so they can use it, they control access, who can come on and off, they continue to pay taxes. It's still their private property, the, the rights, the, the property must stay in vegetative cover and the wetlands must stay intact. So they're, you're kind of buying the, the management rights to the, the wildlife habitat from the landowner.
Is there an annual payment? Does the property owner receive payment for?
The, it's a, it's a one-time payment, it's out, we pay a lump sum price based off, try to establish what, uh, market value would be. For the rights we're purchasing, and that's what we pay the landowner. So it's a one-time payment.
One-time payment, and then you have this easement for continuation?
Correct.
Okay.
So for, uh, for, for these ki- types of easements, since the property owner does not, does pay county taxes on this land?
Correct.
Which is different than if wildlife actually owned it outright?
Correct, yeah, the process for paying taxes is different, so, yeah, it's different. He would continue to pay this like any other private landowner. He retains the right to cut hay on the habitat easement, I failed to mention that part. We, we allow them to retain certain rights, it's usually hay or grays or combination, the landowner has their choice. He chose hating rights out there, so he still can cut hay out there.
But as far as a county perspective, there's no financial, uh, impact occurring?
There shouldn't be. It's, it, it'll be assessed as like any other property.
Well, I'm gonna address that. There is, and we've talked about this before, there is a state law on the books. That under certain circumstances, a landowner can go back to the county assessor and ask to have it reassessed.
Reclassified.
Uh, so I don't get, we don't get involved in that. So however, that, you know, that's their choice. I don't know what the intent.
Yeah, you guys deal more in the pilt world, and the landowner is gonna deal with the assessor on classification, A, B, C. Land use.
Yes.
Taxation on land use.
So to be, if, full disclosure, when you ask, could there be any impact? I don't know.
No.
A lower taxable classification is what they're after, then?
Well, I don't know that that's what, this landowner's never expressed that interest.
Okay.
But they can make that request. I don't know if it qualifies. The assessor has to make that determination.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's fair.
But the formula, your question.
Yeah.
Yeah, the formula doesn't change, it's just whether the classification would change on the property itself.
Yep.
Are you good, Julie?
I think, yeah, there's no cost to the county, and potentially no loss to the county. Those were my questions.
All right. Paul, are you good?
Yeah, I, I always get stuck on the perpetual part, because if I inherited this land in order to do something different with it, I'm handcuffed.
Well, I'd like to address that. I actually am in that situation personally, cause my dad put a per- and that's just the way it is. I don't have to take the land, I can sell it. That's fine. I look at it as a gift.
You might, you might cost my grandpa.
You, you have a choice in that matter.
Danny doesn't.
So I hear that, and I personally am in that situation, and I looked at it, look at it as a gift. I don't have to accept it. I could sell it if I wanted, no problem. That was their choice. In this case, it was my dad's choice, but, so. It's not like we're forcing it on anybody.
Sure.
No, it's, yeah, easements are forever, I mean, you, uh, don't matter if it's utility easement, whatever you place on there, that's good luck kissing that one goodbye, it's, it's, you're married to it, so I mean.
Yeah.
Alright, any other questions?
So could someone come, and if I still own the property, could I build a house there?
Not in the part that's under the habitat easement, on the wetland easement, the uplands are completely unrestricted, so they can do whatever they choose on the uplands. The parts that are in habitat have to stay in natural vegetation, so they can be held on.
Okay.
This criminal owner owns more land adjacent to it, so he's got other parts of the property that are outside the easement that can be built on, but this is the part he wanted to put into it then. I should say this boundary, what isn't final, it's gonna get surveyed, so there might be some tweaks or changes to it, but it's fairly close.
How many acres are encompassed in the, roughly?
Whole thing is about a hundred and fifty-five, a hundred and sixty-five, if I just did some quick math here.
So that, the habitat acres are about a hundred and twenty-five, I just got, or that's what I put on there, I talked to the surveyor yesterday, and he said it was close to a hundred and forty for the habitat easement acres. The wetland acres are, are gonna stay the same at that kind of twenty-three point three and ten point two acres.
So, I just thought I'd share with the Board, when, when we're working with the landowner on these situations, you know, in this case, he owns a lot more land there adjacent to this, he chose those boundaries. So I have landowners that come in sometimes and say they have a hundred and sixty acre quarter. I advise them right off, okay. If you're ever thinking you might want to build a house or put some structures or something there, let's talk about leaving a few acres out in a corner or, you know, some place, so we talk those things through, I try to disclose fully with those landowners all those, I'm working with another one right now in a different county, and they have a large building site, and they literally want to do away with it. They want it all under easement, and I keep asking, are you sure you want to do this, because?
It's forever.
You'll, it's forever, you'll, you know, if your grandchildren want to build a house there, put up a hunting shack. So it's their choice, you know, and, and we try to disclose all that with them fully ahead of time, so they can, and most people do leave out portions for those.
Cause they could build next to this and enjoy the, you know, the wildlife, et cetera, but then it could be a private home yet, okay?
And as I said, I, I personally, not professionally, but personally, am dealing with that too, so I'm sensitive to those things. I can speak from that angle too, to these landowners saying, you need to consider these things, so.
Well, and one of the, one of the other things, I mean, I've been, uh, on like commercial property, um, if there's an easement on, on a piece of property, and I, I should say if you have a commercial buyer, wants to put a business or something on it, sometime they would, certain, if it's a, um, investment group that is buying it for, say, a Dollar General, for example, um, there will not be an easement on that property, or they will walk away from it, so I mean, easements, some people like them, next people hate them, so I, you know, when you walk into those things, it's, some people will pay extra for the easement, and the next person won't touch an easement of any kind, doesn't matter if it's utility easement or, so I mean, they carry a weight both ways.
Oh, sure, and the, the maintenance of this, then, will that fall on your shoulders or the property owner?
That's the landlord's responsibility. And, and we've had this discussion, last time we were with this Board on, on these issues, and you just discussed the crepe easement on, on the petition to have it removed from there. These landowners shop around and look at all these, ours actually pays quite a bit less than that does. But a lot of landowners go with us because they have those haining grazing rights as an option. Whereas many of the other easements that you never hear about, you know, because it's not brought in front of the boards, we're the only one that has to do it, um, you know.
Well, come on, we ain't that bad.
I'm just pointing that out. I have to, and, by the way, I am working on that. Um, but, but they, you know, and I always advise the landlord, when they come in, I said, have you talked to USDA, have you talked to DNR? Have you talked to the Nature Conservancy, have you talked to, you know, all those other entities out there, because we want you to have a program that's gonna work best for you. I don't have to have you sign up for ours, I just want the land conserved. It's actually better if someone else does it, cause then I don't have to deal with it later, you know, but, uh, so, a lot of people come back to us because of, of the freedom of being able to use that for some things that others are more restrictive on. We work not so much here, cause there's not many cattle producers anymore around here, but out west, where I used to live, cattle producers love this program, cause it didn't change the way they did anything, there's no restrictions whatsoever on easement, on grazing, if you can, you can graze it, you can graze any way you want. We don't get involved in that at all, so, works real well for those folks.
Alright.
I don't have any further questions, anybody else? Do we have any, we have, we need to, I don't, I don't, electronically, I'm downloading.
I couldn't see anywhere where there's a motion.
Yeah, we're, we're requesting certification for, that's the term they use, that's what, uh, the state asks us to, to get from the county, before we present them to the Land Exchange Board, so we're requesting county certification on these three easements.
So you would need a motion to recognize.
Need a motion to certify the easements.
That's what I've been looking for then.
Something's just simply worded, we don't, they wouldn't need to be taken individually, or?
No, just the, the motion to certify.
Lump them all together.
So will this suffice, um, I make a motion, the County Board of Commissioners, uh, have considered the above request for acquisition from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife and the Board's decision, alright, stop, not the Board's decision, but would that be sufficient?
We're, we're in agreement to the three, or?
Did you say in your motion?
We're certify, we're recognizing.
Oweing to certify, yeah, yes.
I would just say we're certify, we're a wetland easement for, uh, name to names, and a habitat easement. Cause those are the three. That's why I would put it.
So, I will move to certify the wetland and habitat easements for Michael and Constance Hamm, David and Melissa Felt with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. That suffice?
That sounds good, to me.
Okay, I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson and a second by Commissioner Bredeis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I just want to thank you, and I apologize for the confusion on certification, it's not my call, I'm trying to work on that, it is awkward.
Alright.
So.
We're good.
We're good, thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Blake.
So, uh, basically, just a form, uh, for each one that you certified and not certified, you're just here to handle Michael's.
So this is non-farmable properties?
That's great, it's, it'll be grazing for fast.
Pasture.
Pasture.
Nope, sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Blake. Alright. Yeah, but it's landowners.
That's, they're dealing.
Like I said, somebody would be cussing grandpa.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, ah, where the heck are we, we jumped a little bit, Brayden?
Morning.
How you doing, Brayden?
Doing pretty good, Brayden, Bureau of Parks Department. I'm coming before you this morning to approve the creation of a new full-time park maintenance worker. And this would be our second full-time park maintenance worker, if it's approved, it'd be a, Level B twenty-one, same as our current existing one. Um, we do have forty thousand that goes towards the STS program, and Andrew, I believe, you said half of that will be expended at the end of the month here.
Yep.
So we'll have the remaining twenty thousand to put towards, um, this position this year that we already have in the budget. And keep in mind, we are already six months into the year, so we're gonna have some cost savings for this year as well, because hard to say when exactly we may be able to fill this position as well, um.
Yeah, just moving forward though, for twenty twenty-four budget, the forty, I mean.
So, yeah, I mean.
Right?
So we, the last two years, we've split the STS costs between the general fund and the parks fund. What we do to provide funds for the park fund is we levy money into the general fund and transfer money into the parks fund. What we'll do now is, we won't have that, those levy dollars going into the probation budget, which is in the general fund. We'll take the, the net, whatever we need to do, and put it into the parks fund, so going forward, it'll be taken care of in the budget.
Okay, but forty thousand is what you budgeted for the entire program in the past, so?
Forty thousand is what was budgeted, we have eighty thousand total budgeted for the STS. Forty thousand was in the parks fund, forty thousand was in the general.
Okay, alright, that's, I wanted, alright.
And we're estimating around sixty-two thousand for this position, the benefits and everything. And this position would be set up exactly the same, where obviously all the maintenance work in the parks, but they'd also assist highway with plowing in the winter, whatever we can do to make things work, um, there's no shortage of work for the Parks Department, but it's been working well. That kind of companionship we have with the highway and everything like that, so, very worthwhile and much needed.
So, Ray, if I can ask, um, STS program's ending very shortly. What are you gonna use to fill the gap?
Me.
Do we know, okay?
It's really our only choice right now, Paul, I can just, or Paul put in some extra time, just trying to make things work until we can get a position hired, so there'll be long hours for everyone, so.
Will the vehicle be for twenty twenty-four, will this person need a vehicle, like we talked about before, like a truck or something, or not?
They will be needing a vehicle, but I think it'd be more prudent to purchase one now if we're able to. We do have a fund balance, I believe it's two hundred and five thousand, something like that. So we do have funds available in the Parks Fund balance there for this, it'd be essentially, I don't want to say a one-time purchase, because obviously down the road, we'll have to replace a truck. But preferably, I'd like to get one ordered.
We, we have a truck in the budget for replacement for this year anyway, so as we order that, we would look to order two. So this, how does that work then, when you did decide to come out of the Parks Fund versus rev, or, you know, our regular general fund? So this would actually come out of the Parks Fund? Also, that shouldn't have any levy impact regardless, and this particular truck? If we pay for it out of fund balance, then no, it would not have a levy. Okay, but that's the intention at this point, then? I, I was just always wondering when you decide to take it out of the Parks Fund, the Highway Fund, you know? It's always based on where that operation is coming out of. Gotcha. So, you know, everything that the Parks does is paid for out of the Parks Fund. Okay.
I would assume a trailer and a mower too, or not?
Uh, we have enough mowers right now, we would look at purchasing another small trailer, cause we have some large ones, but they're just, they're running around like that, not ideal. Um, minimal cost, you know, like you're talking a couple thousand dollars for a trailer we would need, so the biggest cost is gonna be the truck.
Yep.
And then some miscellaneous tools to outfit it, of course, cause we basically have rolling shops out there, so nobody has to run back, since we work so remotely like that. Um, so biggest upfront will be the truck then, but yes, we will need another small trailer.
Then is it decided through personnel, like if they need to have like a particular license to do snow plow and stuff like that?
We will require a Class A, so we'll design it the same way that we previously, where a Class A will be required, we may end up hiring someone that needs to obtain one within six months, that's exactly what we.
That was basically what I was going at. Yeah, that's what we did last time, and it worked really well. That's what I thought, okay.
Mister Chair, move to approve the creation of a new full-time Level B twenty-one Parks Maintenance Worker positions.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shifelbain. Is there any further discussion?
I see that we're going to start this as a B twenty-one, but then it states scheduled for reclassification. Is that part of our class and comp study?
That was part of the market study, this was one of the positions that was identified for adjustment in twenty twenty-four. You know, as we were talking about, how do we want to go about handling this, you know, my thought is that we would not change course, that we wouldn't adjust it earlier just because we're going out, but we would identify to applicants that that this position will be receiving an additional adjustment later.
And we already have one person that does this?
That is correct.
This will be a second equal, similar?
Same exact position.
Job description?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not inventing the wheel here.
We're not, yep.
And then hopefully, we don't have to, uh, need another part-timer to rely on.
This alone will help out massively for the department.
That's, I mean, that's the kind of the underneath thing that it really helps out, cause you don't have to rely on part-timers that aren't always reliable.
And I like that.
For the snow plowing.
There will be a blended cooperative with Phil for wintertime, doing the CDL and getting some of that. Very good, very good.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the B twenty-one full-time Parks Maintenance Worker, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Brayden. Uh, Brayden, as long as I got you here, I keep forgetting to call you, uh, Commissioner Bertram from Stearns County, and Larry, I think, that you work with on the park, on Cronus Park?
That would be Ben, Ben Anderson.
From Stern's side?
Right.
Okay, and I think there might be a Larry as well, anyway, they wanna, they wanna get together and talk about Cronus Park somebody.
I guess.
They wanna, Phil and I, so I think Brayden's the guy to talk to, cause Phil's gonna give me that look, like he did, like, oh, why would I be going there? So I'll get over there, we'll try and line something.
That sounds good.
Alright, thanks, appreciate it. Phil, good morning.
Good morning, Phil Schmaltz, Public Works Director, one item for consideration. Uh, we advertised our twenty twenty-three Public Works bulk fuel, um, back in May, opened up one quote we received, and the price they quoted us for thirty-five thousand gallons was three dollars and eight cents per gallon. Um, keep in mind that price does fluctuate penny per penny as the market moves up and down, the way our, uh, our quote and our agreement is written. So, I think you consider the quote we received from Litchfield Oil.
I was surprised to see you only got one, or?
Yeah.
That was last year too.
I think we had one last year too.
Yeah.
In prior years, we had two, I don't know, three, since I've been here.
And you did submit this to three different people, according to the form here, so three different companies had the opportunity to submit a, a quote, and just the one responded.
Correct, and I feel the price that was quoted was a reasonable price, so I'm not concerned about the number we did receive.
How mu- you said it can fluctuate, though?
Yes, so the way it's written, we follow, it, it's through MINDAT's construction system, I'd call it, they follow the rack fuel price, so the market price. And we'll follow that as well, so every month, we'll look at how much fuel we use that month, and adjust the price we pay up and down, depending how much the market moved up and down. Our starting point is gonna be this three dollars and eight cents a gallon, but then we'll move up and down from there, based on market.
So I had a little visit with Phil, I, I questioned the same thing, Paul, and I thought, well, why? Why even get a quote? If it fluctuates, why not just go to whichever company at the time when you need a fill, use a credit card? But then Phil explained to me that it wasn't part, I thought it had to do probably with your budgeting.
Not necessarily, I'd say more to be in better compliance with our purchasing policy, because of the dollar amount we're dealing with.
You're basically bidding all three, or whoever, it could be ten, prospects, would bid off the same target. You're basically bidding all three or whoever, it could be ten prospects, would bid off the same target. So that's where the bid comes in. It's a target, but they can't hold three oh eight for a year, you know, projected, I mean, there's.
And we used to do it that way, where we make them give us a price and then that's the price for the year, but then they have to quote a lot of risk into that number.
Oh, sure.
So we'd rather just pay them what it costs.
It's not gonna be.
With the price of diesel fuel, yeah.
They gotta hedge their risk then.
Okay.
Um.
We should look into our, I know we talked about it, but going into like buying tanker loads or set up a, especially here in Litchfield, I would think eight, where we could take a transport.
Litchfield would be the only place I think it would maybe make sense, and that's part of the scope we're gonna look at as we look at some reconfiguration and potential changes at the Litchfield facility.
And as long as I'm thinking about this too, I'm gonna mention it because I'll forget. Um, the snow trails, Meker County snowmobile trails are interested in the Forest City Highway building if it ever, we ever decide to vacate that building.
We have a.
Because there were one in Manana that's falling into the river.
I gotta request this spring too for our Cedar Mills facility. There's a local individual interested in it. They've been asking for years. And when the time, yeah, when we're ready, we'll probably have a buyer down there.
That's what this gentleman just said, if it ever becomes an option, I suppose, possibly.
Refresh my memory, Cedar Mills, we just use for storage though, isn't it?
Cold storage, correct.
So we don't have storage for diesel fuel?
We have some.
But we pretty much buy as we go?
No, we, in Litchfield, we buy as we go, but we do have some bulk storage as well.
Okay.
So kind of depending.
The outshops got.
The outshops have their own tanks.
They have a a tank that we can buy bulk, they send a truck, but we don't have here, for the larger facility, we don't have like big tanks where you can purchase.
We have smaller tanks, so like thousand, I think they're thousand gallon tanks, just like the outshops, but the guys, when they're out, it doesn't always make sense to drive back to Litchfield to refuel. So not a hundred percent of our fuel comes in the form of bulk fuel from the shop.
Would it, I mean, in the future, in in your reconfiguration that you've talked about and then trying to, would it make sense to put a bulk shop, like maybe a transport load at maybe Crow River and Litchfield and maybe like Cosmos or, so you got if they are out, they can run, if they're closer, they can run and refuel at one of the other locations.
Because what do they do? What do they do now? Use a credit card and go to a local place?
If they're not at their home shop, yes.
Yeah.
We have an account and they can go fuel up through that account.
Because then I think if you can only fill up that Litchfield.
Yeah.
Tanker load.
It kind of defeats the purpose, but.
But but I'd say, yeah, depending where we're, in the end, where we're configured as far as how many units are here or there, that's something we can look at. Um, what I'll say, if we only have two units in Crow River, for example, which we have three now, but it's unlikely that other units around the county are gonna end up in Crow River to fuel. So it's gonna be based on where the units are originating from. Um, as far as what's logical to hold fuel.
My goal is how we used to have bulk fuel right there at Litchfield and then maybe the police department, the sheriff's department goes and fill there too, so that we can do bulk fuel for everybody. Have it.
And MINDAT's already there too, so if they're interested, we partner with them as well.
Well, that's where, yeah, I mean, I'm looking at thirty-five thousand, yeah, I mean, I've got it. I've got three thousand gallon tanks, so I can carry three thousand gallon, I gotta pick up with a semi. And I mean, I, that return on investment was within, you know, two, three years, two, three years.
Bulk and you give a dividend and, I mean, that just, those things just make sense. You don't.
Does that order the pumpkin bars come from?
Yeah.
The dividend check?
I'll keep that in mind. Do you like scotcher real berries or brownies?
Well, he needs three thousand gallons.
I had a pickup like that once.
But you said your goal for that is to wait until.
Make that, make that part of our total package when we're.
But it's obvious, uh, uh, objective that you have too then.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good move.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz I, I think anybody who does it, you know, for farming has.
If you use any quantity, the return.
The return's huge.
About three years, you know, all your investment.
It's a good practice.
Yeah.
I agree, I agree.
Alright, where the hell were we on the fuel?
We're ready to do a motion.
You're taking a motion?
Off the track, yeah.
Mister Chair, move to award the twenty twenty-three bulk fuel quote to Litchfield Oil for an estimated price of a hundred and seven thousand five, nine hundred and fifty on thirty-five thousand gallons of diesel.
I have a motion by Commissioner Shifelby.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Bradison. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of bulk fuel quotes, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil, appreciate it. Greg Schultz. We'll blame it on Dean, he took a lot.
Is Dean here?
Morning, Greg Schultz, plan use, uh, director. Today I got three items for the agenda. First one is a uh, C U P for landscaping on Lake Washington. This is for a Connie Burrell, yeah, Joyce Carlson. They wanna do is they wanna do about seventy feet of new boulder wall, twenty-two feet of steps, twelve cubic yards of soil. So the total cubic yards in the project are about seventy cubic yards. Something was not component at this location, so let's be sure it's done before they can start this project. It's pretty steep, you can tell from the, pretty junked up on the shore, so it's gonna be a pretty good project.
Nowhere to go but up from there. That looks.
I can see why they don't use the steps. I think it's said in there they don't use the steps because they're in such bad condition.
Nope.
It's pretty rough. Rested along is very nice and back at the shore lines. Keep some attention.
Mister Chair, move to approve the application for conditional use permit number one six zero six one to move more than ten cubic yards of material within the shore impact zone and fifty cubic yards within the shoreline district of general development, Lake Washington, with conditions.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shifelby. Is there any further questions for the Lake Washington project? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Next item, Greg.
Next item, my guys, an I U P one six zero six nine, it's for applicant owner Craig Reiner, Reiner Contracting, for an aggregate material mining, washing, recycling. Property located in section eight township, one eighteen, range thirty, Ellsworth Township along two hundred and fifth street. Parcel zero eight, one one, zero one one one. This is a reopening of a conditional use permit that expired way back in two thousand and three. Back in the nineties, um, conditional use permits were what was granted for gravel pits rather than I U Ps, near January for eight years. Um, Craig just recently bought this property in April. Nineteen ninety-five C U P proposed, only fifteen point four acres, this one's gonna be thirty acres. He's planning on in, taking out about two hundred thousand cubic yards of material over this next six years on this property.
Mister Chair, uh, move to approve a six-year interim use permit for aggregate mining and processing of the property located in the northwest quarter, uh, in section eight township, one eighteen, range thirty, in Ellsworth Township. Parcel oh eight dash oh one 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 zero zero zero.
I have a motion by Commissioner Shifelby.
I will second that motion.
I have a second by Commissioner Johnson. Is there any further discussion?
I have a question. Did this individual purchase this property with the intention of using it as a commercial business?
Yes.
And I.
Because, yeah, part of this, the three point five acres was a gravel pit, as you can see there, originally back and then expired back in oh three.
Okay.
She wants to expand beyond that and go into thirty acres. He bought eighty acres. He wants to make thirty acres of this in the gravel pit, expand on what's been mined there already.
Okay, and I did notice there was a neighbor that did have a concern.
Yep.
And was that resolved?
Yeah, excellent. Yeah, they showed up and they had a concern about the wildlife, just general wildlife in the area, since it's gonna be thirty acres. And this property here, the part that's mine, it's um, three point five acres that was currently mined is, as you can see there, kind of rough, just kind of left wild for the last twenty years, but the other thirty, twenty-seven acres, it'll be part of this, are agriculture right now, they're farming field.
That.
Well, they were concerned that this was gonna spread to the north, the whole entire eighty acres, if there's a wetland in the very north, they were concerned about the wildlife on that.
Okay.
Want to know about wildlife impacts, but technically we don't require any A W until it's greater than forty eight, forty acres.
Okay. This fellow owns the whole eighty and.
Whole eighty, yeah, exactly.
Okay, but now part of it is farmable and then he's.
It's poor.
Going to commercial take this out.
Exactly.
But it's never, not very good anyway.
Okay.
Never, it never, it's never started out good.
Yeah.
Just strip the top back and then take it out and put it back, but it.
That's in, that's in that whole area in Ellsworth where all those pits and stuff are.
Yeah, this is just north of Meker Wash Sand and Gravel. The next.
Yeah, it's, it's bad land where they start, so they strip it, but put it back and it's never.
So, east of Minibel. And so is the next one. Meker Wash Sand and Gravel, all in that area.
So it must be just that side of twenty-two.
Yeah, it's east of.
Or the east side of twenty-two.
Yep, down two hundred and fifth street.
Alright, we need a vote on this, correct?
Yep.
Alright, I have a motion, second. Uh, all in favor of the Reiner Contracting Mining Operations, please say aye.
Right.
Alright.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, the last item I have is I U P one six zero seven one, this is for owner Steve Smith. Applicant Justin Singh, Meker Wash Sand and Gravel, for aggregate material mining, washing and recycling, a property located section seven. Township, one eighteen, range thirty, Ellsworth Township. So this is to, this is a reopening of a conditional use permit that expired back in two thousand and one. So. You know, this one's gonna be expanded to about thirty-nine point two one acres. I'm gonna pull about three hundred thousand cubic yards out of this and they said should, this expansion will add approximately ten additional years to the existing mining operations of this Meker Sand and Gravel.
I've noticed.
Basically just southeast of the Reiner pit that the Reiner just bought, or southwest.
Both in Ellsworth?
Yeah.
Both of these are in Ellsworth, and the township is aware of these issues and has head input? I see that Greg Janes.
And Dave Utes has showed up.
Utes.
Okay, yep.
For his example, sure. His main concern is setbacks to the road and that the, the, uh, to do the maintenance on the township road if D and A.
Compensation to the township.
And dust control too.
Yep.
Dave's main concern on both of these is that when it's certain these setbacks from the road, that they're at least a hundred feet back from the center of the road, like there's supposed to be like a structural, so there's no obstructions from from the township road or access or visibility and that's.
Dave Utes is on the gravel tax committee at.
Yep, yep.
And, you know, he really, he really watches and.
We're gonna have to.
He attends these and I always look.
Barb's gravel tax fund is gonna grow the way it sounds this year and we have no idea what to spend the money on because it's locked in that account.
The reserve, yes.
This statute don't allow us to spend it on anything.
Oh, it's burning a hole in my pocket. The planning, yeah.
Move to approve a six-year interim use permit for aggregate mining and processing of property located in southeast one quarter of southeast one quarter of section seven township, one eighteen, range thirty-eight, in Ellsworth Township, Litchfield, Minnesota. Parcel number zero eight dash zero one, zero six, zero zero zero.
Range, range thirty-one.
I have a motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shifelby. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Any, any conversations on landfill? Is that gone? When, what date is it?
West Central's the only one that is in order. It didn't have an acquired in the past. I sent out information to the players in the past, and I gave them what the new criteria was, and West Central's the only one that reached out.
June twentieth is the due date.
June twentieth.
Are we fully operational out there? I know we had the issue with someone with a serious health issue.
Sometimes.
Just.
Oh.
Yeah, it gets pretty full now. We're, thank goodness to the highway department has been stepping up and sending somebody out a couple times, we're kind of keeping it going. But sometimes we've had issues. I was out there last Friday where somebody dumped something right smack in the road, middle of the path up there, so it kind of halted it. Um.
Well, I was out there, took some recycling out. You have a sign that says.
So you dumped it there.
You have a sign and it says.
Yes. Yes.
You know, and you put up there, so it shows. I mean, nobody can say it's not posted that it's closed.
And the people that use it most of the time should know enough to call in advance. It's been open most days. I don't know if it was open yesterday because I was, like it says out there Friday and something, somebody dumped something in the middle road and it was so piled up where people have been dumping. It says if highway isn't out here Monday, just have it closed Monday, but I suspect it's open today again. It usually gets out there Tuesdays and Thursdays. Kind of blades it up so they can move around.
And they did a good job because the sign that says dump closed, they took an old Rubbermaid tote lid, wrote on that, put a rubber bungee around it.
Pull it up and down, whether it's open or closed.
Low-cost signage.
For cycling.
Street cycling.
Well, hopefully we can keep her going. There's plenty of capacity out there.
Have any of our contractors called and complained that they can't get in and dump and slowing down their projects?
I imagine you'll get complaints more than we will.
Yeah.
Alright.
Trying to keep it open.
Yeah, sounds good, Greg. Appreciate, appreciate it.
Thank you, Greg. Yep.
Andrew. Uh, so I'm carrying an item for the sheriff this morning because he's uh, at the annual sheriff's conference right now. Uh, so we have replacement, uh, I'm sorry, authorization to purchase ten squads, uh, would be the twenty twenty-four squads order. Of those ten squads, four of them are squads that were budgeted for this year, but we were unable to purchase for our normal replacement schedule that would be for next year, and then two of them are for the two new positions that the board approved as part of this budget. Uh, we do not yet have a price on these squads. Um, what we have found is that because of the, the lack of supply and great demand for, for squad cars across the country, that the order window is closed very quickly, so we wanna have the flexibility to be able to place that order as soon as we can. Uh, as soon as that order window opens, we wanna be able to get in there and order as many of them as possible. The hope is that we'd be able to order all ten. What we found was in January, when we tried to order eight, we were only able to order four because of the, the supply constraints.
Right.
Yeah, so in January, when we purchased um, four squads, each of them cost forty-two thousand five hundred dollars uh, each. I anticipate that's a probably about the ballpark of where we're gonna see, plus probably a little bit to cover some additional costs, so. But that's about the area of what we're looking at. Um, as I said, four of these, I'm sorry, six of these are currently included in the budget because those include those two new positions plus the four replacements, which we're still catching up on from back in twenty twenty. Uh, and then four of them would be budgeted for in next year's budget. Questions?
Where are we at with deputies anyway? I'm just curious.
We're still short on deputies. Um, we've hired two recently.
Oh, okay, okay. I was just wondering if we hired, if we bought the two, for the two new positions, I mean.
We have not purchased.
No, I mean, if we do.
Yeah.
Put it in, I mean, they're not gonna end up sitting there.
No. Like that we, we ultimately, we have a number of vehicles that are beyond their useful life at this point, and so if we, um, if we were to receive some extra, quote-unquote, extra vehicles, the vehicles that we're going to need.
Yep.
You know, they would move in with existing staff and they'll rotate them through appropriately.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Hearing none, I'd look for a. Motion on the squads.
Mister Chair, move to approve authorization of Sheriff Cruz to order up to ten squads for twenty twenty four.
I have a motion by Commissioner Shifelbine, do I hear a second?
I will second.
I have a second by Commissioner Johnson, is there any discussion?
I thought I was, no, I can't find my notes on it, but one of the positions that. We were looking to hire was described as um, primarily within administration and not out and about very much. But still there was a squad attached.
You're thinking about the twenty twenty four budget, that's not, we're not purchasing a squad for that position.
That's not part of this.
Not part of this order.
Okay.
Real, realistically, out of ten, how, how many can we even believe we're going to get in twenty twenty four?
Four.
Four.
Try it correct.
It's difficult to say.
Four.
The, the challenge that we have is that because we weren't able to place an order in twenty twenty, we are four behind on our replacement schedule. Um, and so, we do need to continue to try and be aggressive to catch back up so that we can be replacing these in a reasonable timeframe. Because what we are seeing is that there's increased maintenance costs on some of these, we're seeing larger repairs on these older ones and we have to keep them on the street.
Andrew, uh. I'm just trying to think back of the payables over the past couple of months, of course, we haven't had any new vehicles, but when we get the vehicles. Is, Seeland is still doing most of our conversion for us?
The, the radio installations, yes.
Yes, okay.
When, when we buy a vehicle, can we just buy a vehicle from a Meker County automobile vendor and then we send it off somewhere to have the specialty things placed on it?
So typically the way that it works is the, those state contracts do flow through local vendors, uh, or local dealers, so that's typically how we end up purchasing them. Um, we would not purchase a, you know, a Tahoe off the street, you know, a, a.
Yeah.
A residentially available Tahoe because the, there are things that come along on the police package that provide. For that vehicle that are not there when you normally purchase it, um, so that's why we would not typically go off and do that.
I, over the last couple of years, I think the, we purchased through Atwater Ford, and only the last four came through Atwater Ford. Um, but I think maybe the group before that with COVID and not, I think we might've got a couple from ten forty at one.
That was who we purchased from earlier this year, we have typically purchased from Atwater Ford.
Yeah, okay, these came.
Ten forty came.
This year, just because.
That's who had the availability.
Yeah, I mean, it's so hard to get, so when you get them, you beggars can't be choosy type thing, you get it. So right now it's been a little.
But our local.
Odds of us getting ten Cruisers this year are probably slim and none, and if we get four, it will be.
But if we can get in, place the order before there's a cutoff, then, then great.
Maybe, yeah, maybe get six or, try and catch back up.
But we try to work with Meker County?
A- as I said, these all flow through local dealers.
Everyone has an opportunity to bid on these?
Yeah, I mean, it's not a bid because it's, I mean, the state does the bidding, it's a state contract, so the state works with the manufacturers to determine, you know, reasonable pricing. You know, government vehicles are, are typically the lowest priced of what you're gonna find. Um, and then, the local dealers use that contract to then purchase those vehicles from the manufacturer.
And then do we trade in our old ones?
We typically will sell them at auction.
They just go on the auction?
Exactly, um, and they, they still fetch a decent amount of money, you know, three thousand dollars or so.
Okay.
Um, and I think what happens is when that window opens, maybe Atwater's got ten slots or fifteen slots, well. Candy O I, Chip W and ten other counties, them ones are gone in the first thirty minutes and then you're, then you go to ten forty or.
Yep.
The next, the next vendor, I see, I see.
Like I said, beggars can't be choosy, and everybody's.
But beyond, beyond just purchasing from a local dealer, there's, there's significant benefit in the long run from buying from local dealers as well because that's where all the warranty work occurs. And so, there's always warranties that come up on these vehicles, we don't wanna have to take them up to Brainerd to go, you know, replace a. What, a part that needs to be replaced.
Recall.
Oh, I always wanna see that we have our local people at least given an opportunity to participate in these contracts and biddings and.
Yep.
That's important, okay.
Alright. Did we vote on it?
Not, not yet.
Not voted. Mister Chair, I call the question.
Yes.
Good enough. Uh, all in favor of ordering the twenty twenty four squads, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, or opposed, motion carried.
Okay.
Administrators report.
Yes, so I wanted to give you all a brief update, kind of where we're at on the facility project and what we see as the timeline going forward. So. We're now at the point where we can start getting the ball rolling on the bonding process, so the first step in that is at our meeting on June twentieth. We're gonna have a draft of the capital improvement plan that's for the bond, which the capital improvement plan's only gonna cover this project. Uh, that will include a not to exceed amount for the bond, uh, it doesn't mean that that's the amount that we're gonna bond for, but it's the maximum amount that we could bond for. Fully anticipate that it's gonna be less than that amount. Uh, with that, you're also gonna have a resolution to consider which would set a date for a public hearing, the date that we're targeting for the public hearing is July eighteenth. Which is when we'll hold that public hearing on the C I P for the bond, and then you would have the opportunity at that point to potentially adopt a resolution which adopts the C I P. Which is, starts then a thirty day window for um, residents to be able to petition to um, object to the C I P. That date is August seventeenth, also on July eighteenth, talking with architects and the construction uh, managers, they're confident that at that point. Um, the design will be, you know, more or less complete and they'll have a, a good estimate through the construction documents phase. Which will um, give you another opportunity to review where things are at with the project and authorize the letting of the project for bids. That process, once we let, will, we anticipate having the project be on the street for about four weeks, so mid to late August is when we would look to open bids. We would then, uh, once the bids are open, verify everything is, is accurate and uh, come forward with a list of contracts for you to consider, likely at the September third meeting. That point we'll know what our, our, our awarded contract value is for the entire project, and I think at that point we would be comfortable with issuing bonds. Or issuing the general obligation bond, so we're targeting October then to be that date. So that's just FYI, kind of what we have seen coming up is the schedule over the next few months, there's obviously a lot of moving pieces here, um, but do you have any questions about this?
Do you see anything that could delay issuing the bond into the following year?
The, the biggest delay that I could see potentially happening is as we go through the design process, the construction documents phase. If we run into significant permitting issues, where we find that there's significant work that needs to occur for one reason or another. That, you know, the city or the state determine needs to happen, that then, that then pushes the decision making process on the um, issuing the debt, or I'm sorry, issuing the bids. That then could potentially impact when we issue the bonds, we certainly don't have to wait to award contracts to issue a bond. I just know that based on our previous discussions, we wanted to nail that number in as tight as possible.
And the only reason I bring that up is because the hospital.
Yep.
We don't wanna get into twenty twenty four to issue the bond because now we could have a conflict.
It, it impacts our ability to issue a tax exempt bond because of the amount of bonds that the hospital anticipates issuing, yes.
Two questions, um. Does the issue with the school district and the family services building, is this? I, I, I'm hoping there won't be any issues, but is this a potential?
Based on the discussion that we had with them last week, they understand what our timelines are, they understand that we want to move on this and we came up with some solutions. Um, to be able to allow us to proceed with our project even if the, the formal transfer of the property is not yet complete, so, I'm not concerned about that.
Second question, we had Dean here today, um, I was, of course, hoping that we could have. Taken some additional funds, I know that they've given monies to the city of Litchfield and various projects. How, would it be possible for us to get some additional funding from the legislature toward our project?
Yes, it's possible.
Okay.
However, we would have to stop the project now.
That's.
We would not be able to continue to move forward because the state has different requirements, code requirements that would, we would have to adhere by. Which would then have other, other things that we would have to include in the project, you know, one of the things that was an example that was given to me is there's certain energy code requirements that we would then have to abide by, which. You know, may lead to us having to install, you know, solar panels on the building, well, that's another thing that has to happen with the project that's not included in our design today. So if we wanted to wait through the next legislative session to see if we'd be able to get some bonded funds, then we would, we would realistically be pushing the project back a year.
Cause we're doing more of a remodel whereas like the city is building new, I wondered if that was part of the criteria for getting some of these funds?
Not necessarily.
No, okay.
So, because the city got funds, will they be required to do that prevailing way?
Yes.
Now, I think, um, you know, the, the representative Rudolph's. Ho- hope, our thought process was when we went down there and testified for some funding through the bonding bill was that. I think at that point he was thinking there was gonna be a second round of bonding.
Yep.
Because they had skipped the, like you explained earlier, uh, had skipped the, the last uh, two years since twenty eighteen, they skipped twenty twenty, so. I, this project would have been in that second round.
Correct.
And that did not happen.
Didn't happen.
So now that puts us into next year if there would be something, and it's by Anium, so there probably wouldn't be anything next year either.
There may or may not be.
Yeah, it's, so it's speculative right now and then it would be on, we'd be too far down the road on this, because it was for this building.
Yeah.
Not that one.
Cause I was curious.
Which, which we were hopeful would align into this.
But. If we had actually applied, requested, and then we just didn't make that cut. Was that?
Yeah, that, that's, that's a fair way to, to say it, yeah. The, the projects that ended up getting funded this year were projects they'd identified for funding last year, but because the bonding bill wasn't approved.
Yeah, and also, everything that got approved, or, everything that Dean had approved had been in the works for.
At least we tried.
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Had we been in there two years ago, for this?
Maybe.
Been on the table this time around.
Because he said, he is on the committee of the capital investment bonding and I wondered how that, the city of Litchfield got funds, but we, we didn't.
Well, they've been working on this while, it's under, for five years.
And even the first district project is something that's been on the radar for a couple of years, and so.
Did you hear in the news what happened to a creamery, was it in Hastings? And I was wondering if that would affect the minds of those here in Litchfield to shut down access to the septic system for that entire company. Was, there's a little, it's a smaller creamery.
Yep.
They, they cut them off, they shut off the pipe, you cannot put your septic coming back into the city until you get your.
Waste one.
Things up to date and they're scrambling, and I thought, wow, if they were to do that to our first district.
Panesville, Panesville does, they truck a lot, I think they separate and truck out certain byproducts.
So it doesn't all go into their local city septic, oh my gracious, yeah. Alright.
Any other questions about this? If not, I have two other brief things, okay. Uh, you, you saw an individual come in with a camera here today, yesterday and today, we've been filming our promotional video, which was something that we included in the budget for this year. Interviewing um, staff members about what they like about working for the county, and it's something that we're gonna use as we try and encourage people to apply here and, you know, just get the word about why Meker County is a good employer, so. Working on that and as soon as that's done, we'll have a world premiere right here in the.
Will it be at Hollywood here?
I, I doubt it. I don't know if we will, we'll rent out the space for that, I don't think it's gonna have the same, the same uh, desire from the community to watch as. Um, and then.
Will we re, be required to?
To watch it, yes, you're required to. Last, lastly, uh.
Could have been your know before, line up.
I couldn't read this, sorry Andrew.
It's fine. March, that's overdue.
Okay.
Um, lastly, as a reminder, uh, offices will be closed on June nineteenth and observance of Juneteenth. That concludes my report.
Alright, okay Andrew, Julie, how about you start us off with Commissioner?
You bet Jeff, I'm ready.
You gotcha.
Okay.
Some of it's Swedish.
Yeah. Hey, it's the sweet, here we go, yeah. Um. I'll try to translate for you, okay. I could use a donut and a cup of coffee about now, but.
Where's that guy with the camera?
I know, great, is he around the corner?
It's fine, this is just already being recorded. Tim's gone.
Yeah.
We'll send that to a promotional video.
County commissioner meeting, okay, well, our last reports were given on the sixteenth. Uh, then on Tuesday, the sixteenth, it was our regular meeting, then that afternoon of the sixteenth. At one o'clock, we had our informational meeting about the remodel project. Then the next day, uh, Wednesday, the seventeenth, I had the local public health meeting, family services building, Mike Molitor. The community paramedic officer, he gave a very nice presentation about his position and the services that he provides. He partners with the sheriff's department, social services, and with local public health, and that was, that was well done, it was fun to visit with him. Uh, the legislature had not wrapped up quite at that time yet, uh, local public health has received word that Meker County will be awarded a suicide prevention grant, and it was a good one. So, public health, local public health was pleased. Uh, there's another COVID booster available for folks age sixty five and up if people would like to pursue that option. Uh, the local public health office and social services are continuing to plan and prepare for their merger. Um, they're beginning to transition some position duties at this time. And public health is still seeking applicants for a couple of positions, so please encourage people to look at the Meker County website for job posting information, we would like to have. Folks take a look at that. Then on Tuesday, the twenty third, uh, we had our regular county commissioner work session. Where we heard from three individuals, it was the LAMP, Litchfield area mentorship program. We heard from Supporting Hands, which is a nurse and family partnership program. And Phil Schmals, our public works director, came in and updated us on funding and some future needs. Then on Wednesday, the thirty first, I had the community health board, which is the three counties. Um, we were presented with the first quarter expense reports, financial statements, and grant summaries. Uh, the board discussed and approved a teleworker policy that was quite lengthy, it was about a thirty five page document. And we also heard updates on the WIC programs throughout those three counties. Uh, the board will be conducting the annual review now, we're in the process, the annual review for the administrator of the community health board. Um, then, this coming Thursday now, today is Tuesday, this Thursday, the eighth. Um, I'm wondering if everyone had received their brochure in the mail, mail about the Excel transmission line, which is coming through Meker County, it is coming through Meker County. Um, there is a meeting here at the county fairgrounds, Thursday, anytime from four to seven P M, you can come up to the fairgrounds. The Excel transmission line people will be there. It will be informational, they have narrowed it down to two routes that are left. They're coming right through Meeker County. And, uh, everyone should have received this pamphlet. But I, I encourage people to come and attend, so at least they're in the know about this.
I had mentioned too, I think there's tonight, Kimball.
Kimball, I think it's at Powder Ridge.
At four to seven.
Yes, Powder Ridge is tonight from four to seven, and Becker is Wednesday. And then they're coming here to Meeker County at the county fairgrounds from four to seven this Thursday night. And I.
And there's one in Wilmer, I think, next week.
Yep, there's one coming up, Redwood, Wilmer, uh, Granite Falls. And you can also go online to their MN Energy Connection dot com website. And it gives a map, the whole map of the area. So, I don't know if everybody received one of these, but.
Two of them.
But I think I've had several over the last time, but anyway, it's down to two routes now. So, that's my report.
Alright, thanks, Julie.
Did we do anything as a county then, as far as the latest, or are we, a- as far as Excel and stuff?
We're, we're working on a letter for the board to consider.
Okay, I thought you were doing something, but it may be in vain at this point, but, you know, but, so be it.
Ult- ultimately, the Public Utility Commission is the one who makes the decision.
Yeah.
So, the, the idea is that we would, you know, send a letter expressing concerns about, you know, a number of issues that came up at our, at our work session, and, um, and that way, at least it's on the record.
Could something like that be presented on Thursday to these people at the county fairgrounds?
I, I don't think we're in a place where it's gonna be ready for Thursday, um, but it will be provided to them as well.
Because what I'm hearing and finding is that, um, as with anything, if you want something to go through, you will seek the least path of opposition. And if Meeker County is not excited about this going through, then they should be made aware of that because they only have two routes left. And it seems like they're both coming through Meeker County. I don't know if there is a, a feel of opposition, I think the sooner they're made aware of that would be to our benefit.
I think, I think our challenge is going to be, um, that it always was coming through Meeker County, even when they had more proposed routes. I think our challenge is, uh, I mean, I don't, the trouble is, I don't think there's gonna be a proposal that you could give them that, or an argument you could give them that they're gonna go around Meeker County. Um, which puts us at a severe disadvantage from the start. Um, yeah, I don't, I, I mean, I hate to say that we're getting a power line, but somebody is going to. And if it ain't me, it's gonna be you, and if it ain't you, it's gonna be Danny, and if it ain't, you know, it's gonna be Paul. It's not a favorable position to be in.
No.
Um, but.
Yeah.
Expressing our concern and our, and our issues are.
But I just feel the sooner the better.
Yeah.
Sooner the better.
They have to pose to, to the state, correct? Isn't that what they said?
That's what they had said, and then the state's gonna choose which of the two.
Yeah.
It's not even Excel's choice, which is why it's appropriate to express our concerns to the state, because they're the ones who make the decision.
Yep, I mean, I, I don't know what else you can really do as far as a county, other than what you're kind of proposing to do. You know, at this point.
We've offered information meetings and, you know, but.
I think they're gonna tell you the same thing at the fairgrounds tomorrow. Well, put it, go on the website and file your, your
Your comments.
Comments through the portal or whatever.
Yep.
So.
So, the letter is basically, everything that was kind of discussed at our work session has been memorialized into a written letter that the commissioners will sign off on, and then we can submit that. But that doesn't preclude individual citizens from making their own comments. And so, I think, you know, the county as a whole has to take one solid position of addressing our concerns. And then, you know, town, it'll just kind of go smaller based on where those areas are. So, they're aware of the positions that we have in our letters, because that's what kind of came out of our work session. So, they should be aware of that.
That power line changed the landscape, for those of you who've traveled west on ninety-four and seen it running right adjacent to ninety-four, man, did that change the entire look of ninety-four. Not that ninety-four was pretty.
No.
But, along that, several miles stretched there, where it goes, it really changed the look of the landscape.
Well, and I think the, you know, around Becker, it's like twenty-eight hundred acres of potatoes. That'll be solar farm. You know, so it's massive amounts of acres of production in certain areas that is more worrisome, I think. But, you know, those folks, definitely, but.
Well, I remember, and I mentioned this when we were all down in the basement for our open meeting, that, um, back in the day when the big power line went through just up on number sixteen in the northern part of Meeker County up here, that was, that was a terrible ordeal. And many disgruntled farmers and, and it, it was not a pleasant, pleasant situation. And now they're coming back again, they're not gonna follow a similar path. I, I still don't understand why they can't utilize, um, road right-ofways, what, something that is already government properties. And as I look at some of these maps, they'll take an eighty acres and plop a, um, a unit sort of here and there, and it's across some of the most productive farmland in Meeker County. That will be taken up by this. And, but, I've had a number of phone calls, of course, and concerned citizens. And I just wanna make sure that they realize we are addressing it, discussing it, and that people are aware and have an opportunity to go in and ask their questions.
Yeah.
So.
Agreed.
Alright, that's my report.
Alright.
Danny, what do you got?
I had a, uh, Woodlands that I had zoomed and Beth was there, so. Since it's almost a yearly anniversary of my spanking, I'm not gonna divulge much more information about that. Um, I also had a investment meeting last week with Steve. And the treasury is looking pretty good in terms of what we're getting. I think we're getting, what, four and a half percent on our money? Which is, which we've already seen the impact on our, uh, our, you know, po- potential bonding, because I think we gained some last year. And then we'll gain some again this year, at least our, our general fund will have some. And then we'll be able maybe to adjust again because of the excellent income. So, that was a good.
Some of the rates that were locked in that are still low, but they're cycling off.
Yep, but it was like an average of four and a half on like April thirtieth or so, which is good.
Danny, are we mostly in the magic fund or?
Pretty, seventy percent?
I think we're about half in the magic fund, and then about half is invested in CDs with Wells Fargo.
Okay, I thought it said seventy percent, is that?
But that's, that's just what PFM
Okay.
Has, we don't have everything with PFM.
Yep. Yep, but that's with everything in there, you know, including the magic fund and not. And I think the, the hospital was at like four and a quarter that they were getting. A little bit lower just because of the timing, you know, when they had their CDs last year. So, that was good, good news anyway. Um, and then, uh, yesterday, Steve and I had a class and comp and reviewed, uh, I believe, three positions that, uh, going forward. One that won't be filled for a while possibly, and two others that will be more immediate, so.
And, yeah, and the one how it is like a kind of a no net gain, it's just a re, reclassification.
So, there was four total positions, two of them were the same position, three of them are no net gain. I mean, there's a slight, but it's, it's replacing existing positions, and one of them would be a brand, I'm sorry, is a reclassification. So, there's no true, like, brand new position out of.
Yeah, no creation of a.
There are other ones at the personnel committee. It's all kicking off the budget process.
Yep.
So.
And that was it for me.
And actually, I have one thing on investments too, I was gonna mention there, so. Well, we talked about some CDs with Sharon that are longer term, out that maybe we pay to take the penalty on.
Yeah.
Just, I think we can.
Is she looking into that then?
She was gonna do some homework, just cause they weren't till twenty-five or twenty-six.
Some of them were really low interest rates.
Low, low.
Just like, if we can pay the penalty and get a.
And generate a little more.
If it's a three, might be a short payback.
All the short-term interests are way really well.
Long-term is stable, that hasn't, much short-term is.
Make your money work for you.
Yeah, so.
You have anything else on class and comp really?
Ah, no.
That's pretty much sums up those two, so. Those two we had together, so.
Alright, well, I'll go next, and just cause I'm half done already. Uh, investments, oh, Grove City Care, uh, MRC, at a MRC Zoom meeting on the twenty-second. Um, and that was the day the legislature was ending, so there was a lot of things in play there that morning um, that we were talking about. One thing I was gonna, I got some notes here, Andrew, public safety aid.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do you know where that landed kinda from the state? Are we, did we see an increase there?
Yes, so it's a one-time revenue, remember, I've seen as five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars that we'll receive. So, um, Brian and I have already been talking about how can we potentially use that money? And what we're leaning towards is we had some communications projects that were included in our ARP funds that we could shift towards, um, you know, this pot of funding. There's also another communications project that, that hasn't fully, um, come to the board's attention yet, our microwave system, which has something to do with it. I'm not a hundred percent certain how it works, but it uses microwaves, um, i- is in need of replacement. And so, all of those things we should be able to pay for with our one-time public safety aid, which then frees up those American Rescue Plan dollars for other uses.
Yeah, if anybody ever wants to get a headache, hop into emergency communicate, Danny said.
Yeah, I got a headache, yeah.
And.
Get acronyms out of them.
Next gen nine-one-one, and it's like, I've been on it for five years and I.
Throw acronyms at you right and left.
It's like, there's some, it's pretty deep stuff.
Yeah, exactly.
You gotta understand the language or you get lost.
Their own code, the language.
Best hour of sleep I've had a year.
But the, uh, the.
I see that.
We're not recording anymore.
The, the, the long and short of it, the, the long and short of it, as a state, we're falling far behind because with the cell phones and the communication advances, the emergency communications network is falling. The pagers and the next gen nine-one-one and just, you can do all sorts of things with your phone, but we don't have the infrastructure to support it and back it up. So, that's the long and short of the public safety thing, but.
Okay.
Um, so that was at MRC, um, Grove City Care, everything, uh, we did an audit there, everything went well there. Um, schools, um, one thing I was gonna say, uh, we met with the school board on the, on the building project over there, Brandy and Andrew and myself. And, uh, I, I think a lot of it was, uh, a lot of their questions, and there was an article in the paper and, and stuff. And I think a lot of their questions were kinda geared for, or towards, um, just not understanding, not having the history and the understanding of how we got to where we are today and why didn't we do this then? And those types of things, so, um, Andrew had put together some, uh, we charged them basically nine percent flat rate per year for maintenance costs. And when Andrew ran the numbers on what their actual percentage of, of their maintenance costs were versus the actual cost of family service center, uh, maintenance costs over, looks like about eight, nine years, it came, they paid thirty-one hundred dollars more than, um, if, if we had have done the actual, so that, and we used a nine percent flat rate so they could budget, cause it used to be a fluctuating based off the maintenance costs. So, then they could never budget very accurately, cause you didn't know what you had coming the next year yet.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we went to a flat rate in twenty sixteen, and over since twenty sixteen, we're about thirty-one hundred dollars off. But the last three years, they've been below nine percent. So, some years they paid more, um, some years less than nine percent is the actual maintenance cost, but it comes out really close to what's projected, so.
Pretty darn close.
So, I think we had a good conversation, I think. Um, leaving there, Brandy had a lot of good history on it in her files. And I think once, uh, the school just basically got that information and kinda got their minds wrapped around about what we need to do, how we need to do it, and, and where they sit, um, there, I think in the papers, articles about a compensation dollar amount of us purchasing and, and, uh, Jesse over there said right away, one of the points he made right away was, you know, it's one government entity to the next, and you've already been taxed to, you know, why tax somebody again to?
And wasn't there?
Building that's already there, so that would be.
We still wanna maintain a relationship with the auditorium.
Correct, correct. So, it was, it was a, a, a non-hostile environment.
Good.
And in a good discussion and educational.
Informative, yeah, okay.
Just seemed like two school board members that didn't know the history and.
Well, I think probably most of them, no, Mar- Marcia is probably the longest term, and she was in the median prevention. And, and even she, you know, she didn't have all the details of how it happened.
Which is fine, that's the way you wanna get information.
But everybody was in agreement that it's been a good, between the city, the county, and the school board, it's been a good working relationship, and they wanna maintain that.
Okay. I was just concerned that if there's any holdup with our moving forward with our remodel project.
And it's navigating some of the language in the, in what is, is it a grant that they received? It was a grant, correct?
They received an appropriation from the state.
Okay.
You know, state bond money, state requires that it be held by that government entity for a period of time after that. They wanna ensure that it receives its full useful life. And so, that's the main reason why it wasn't transferred to us seven years ago.
Okay.
And, and there's language, yes, you brought up a point too, the way he, if you read certain parts, it's like, I think we could have done this. You know, it could have been done, but it's, all depends on who interprets what, you know.
The, the big picture is we're all on the same page, we all have the same goal in the end, and, and we're gonna work towards it, so.
Yeah.
It's all positive.
Yeah, it was good. That's all I have.
Well, one of the companies we own as a county is CPT, the county of land and technology. Um, we seem to grow about sixty thousand dollars a month. I have a cash balance of, uh, two point four million, so, consistent there. And I'm gonna say something unique, we actually are fully staffed. We just hired our last person, and for the first time since I've been on the board, two and a half years, we will be fully staffed. So, kind of a nice feeling, um, so they can get go on that tax rewrite. And we had a Ucap, um, and one of the programs they have is the volun- volunteer income tax assistance program for people. Um, in order to get the grant to pay for it, um, they have to have about fifteen hundred that participate. And over all the counties, they had eighteen hundred, so they were at a hundred and eighteen percent. So, they got full, fully funded for their folks that, that, um, prepared the taxes. It ended up being four point three million in state and federal refunds that they were able to get for the folks that they did the taxes for. So, that's a pretty good thing. Then we had an interesting discussion about the Wyndham Processing Plant. That's went into bankruptcy. And it's, was gonna be sold on auction, they did get a bidder, uh, Iowa, someone from Iowa Company down there bought it. However, one thousand of the employees at this company were there on work visas from other countries. Um, they aren't gonna keep any of them. So, they're arranging for all these folks to be sent back. Herein lies a greater problem. They've been here on these work visas, they have had children, and those children are US citizens. So, the others, they end their visa and go home, but now their children are US citizens. So, they have some big obstacles to get work through quickly so that they can make this all work and, and keep these families together. So, it's kind of interesting to, to hear, cause we have folks on the Ucap board from that area down in, in Lincoln County and so forth, so.
Can I, can I ask, um, cause I know all these processing plants usually work, like Hormel, uh, usually them, them folks on a work visa come from, the, almost all of them come from basically the same country. So, I don't know if it's Mexico or, I mean, certain countries, you know, South Africa, I know a lot of guys. So I don't know if it's Mexico or, I mean, certain countries, you know, South Africa, I know a lot of guys, seasonal workers will get. I know farmers that get guys in in March, and they have been December first, they gotta go back, and they do that rotation every year. And I was just curious if, is there a general region where they're, did you know where they're?
You know what, I saw it on the newspaper, uh, just yesterday, but I don't recall.
Governments, how their visas work and stuff, so.
It, it's just unfortunate, cause they've been, some of them own homes here, been here a long time. So I don't know how long these work visas are going, or if they're continually renewable, or what, if you have full-time employment, can you get? Can you get renewed for another year automatically or?
I thought you have to go back, I'm pretty sure, uh, you know, you have to go back for X amount of days, I don't think it's perpetual. You know, I mean, you gotta go back and.
I think it depends on the program, cause there's different work visa programs, and so it depends on which one it is, the type of work you're doing, you know, those sorts of things, so.
Yeah, it's kind of, you know, kinda spooky, I, I, I know I wouldn't wanna have a family in a situation like that. Then we had the one watershed one plan meeting. Now Danny, I wanna ask you guys.
That's honestly as exciting as an urgency service.
That reminds me, I have one tomorrow.
This one was a bit intense, cause we had John Cold there from. Um, do you have any cities as a part of your watershed plan?
Cities, I don't believe so. What, what do you mean cities?
Like Hutchinson has participated in our one watershed plan because they're affected by it. What, the interesting discussion.
I don't think so. Do you remember Ann, uh, Randy from?
There is a concern over the insurance. Cities are covered by the, the League of Minnesota Cities, we're covered by MCIT. So, who covers if there's some need, you know, because you have a joint, that group, so.
Who's your host? Who's gonna be the host contract?
Fiscal will be, um, McLeod.
So then what McLeod's insurance cover, and then you'd have to indemnify and?
John Cold said we need to look into this.
John Cold is representing whom?
He is, he is going to draft us our agreement.
Is he representing the whole one watershed one plan? Cause he's obviously not representing. Is he the watershed?
Or representative yet. We have not retained him. We are just, we brought him into the meeting to seek, uh, his advice, his opinion, and so forth. And he is gonna draft us a couple of possible agreements, that of course would be coming to you and would need full board approval. Uh, before we entered into it, but.
Who are all the entities in this one?
We have McLeod, um, Renville, Sibley, um, Wright. So, you know, it's, it's kind of a diverse group. It was, it was really.
Do you have soil and water?
Yeah.
From each county then too?
Except ours, and I don't understand why, oh yes, no, 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 he's in there, yeah, hand-ready, I'm sorry.
I thought that's the whole point of having the fiscal host, is takes care of that responsibility. Cause I thought that's what our big, bigaloo with Min- Mississippi was, is that, uh. Who was the hope, they didn't wanna do something and something, but they're still responsible, right? So I'm kinda confused why the city of Hutchinson would suddenly think they're on the hook or something. But why they would be, you know, hmm.
So is, are they the only city within that?
But it created a, a question.
Yeah.
And so they're doing some research to find out just exactly.
So you guys, the, your South Fork, one watershed, one plan, hired Rinky Noonan with this guy representing?
Well, he's not representing us yet. We hired him to draft us some agreements.
Because Hutchinson were nervous about this?
John brought it up, he said, this is an issue that we need to investigate.
Gotcha.
He said, we, he wants some case law on this, so that if it comes up as an issue later on, that we've already done the research and we're not. Coming in back doors, so. Yeah, and then, um, then they talked about, what about, if we run out of money? Do we wanna tax? Do we wanna set up a special taxing district? You know, it's like, oh, you know, I thought Bowser was gonna be handling a hundred percent of this, we weren't gonna have to worry about it. In the case that, in the event that we should run out of money because of a project. So there was all kinds of questions. I'm not offering any answers here today, I'm just telling you, it was a pretty in-depth meeting. And we're still adjusting the finance.
Yeah, which is same as Mississippi, but they just basically follow one plan to another, and that's how they kinda develop. Like the other one, the North Fork is, there's not, like I said, there's just nothing going on, but that's been four or five years in terms of any. New discussions, it's just like, here's the plan, Bowser gives you so many dollars, see if you can get individuals that wanna take it. And it's never been any discussion like taxing or anything like that, or responsibility, I mean, it's usually Bowser grants.
But I think Cold is just covering all the bases from the standpoint, so if there is something that comes up, which is probably smart. You know, I'd rather be ahead of the curve than having it come and kick us from behind, so, it was an in-depth meeting.
Gotcha, that doesn't happen that often.
Of course, I had allergies, so, I had taken a Benadryl and I was fighting, oh man, I was fighting.
You do not take a Benadryl before you go to a one watershed one plan meeting.
Bring a thermos of coffee.
You make sure you have either Mountain Dew or a Red Bull or.
And of course, it's the one time.
That's how I could teach you.
Okay, then I had a Prime West meeting last week, I got two things from that, just to give you a thing, another, another, uh, board that we own this. We own Prime West Health. Uh, year-to-date, healthcare expenses, um, are eighty-nine point four percent through April. So their year-to-date is April right now. Non-claim expense expenses are six point seven percent of the revenues. Net income for April was two point three million. Our year-to-date net income is a gain of six point four million, or three point nine percent of the revenues, so.
Is that what you project, is that on target? I mean.
Oh yeah.
I'm out here.
Yeah, it's on, well on target. Um, we have, uh, total cash balance as of the end of April. Is one hundred and twenty point seven million, and this includes the asset categories of checking, savings, magic fund, PFM. And the short term, so, um, we have, we have a number of magic funds. Evidently, in the magic fund, you can buy very short-term things, so they got them all ranged out and, uh. Doing very well. Then, the last thing on top of it, they, um, we did the, um, the new mission statement, we're working on. Making sure, saying, we used artificial intelligence, and that was pretty cool, because we all went into groups. And then we had someone there from staff, they typed it in and sent it to one computer. And Jamie sat there and would, took everybody's bullet points, and he would, somehow they ask it questions. It comes up with a completed mission statement. It's just.
In seconds.
In seconds, i- it's unreal, it is just unreal. Perfect sentences, it makes sense, it sounds good, and it took it all from bullet points that were put in from. Twenty groups, so it was, it was pretty interesting, you know, we, we all hear about artificial intelligence and. I got to actually.
So it's basically like, I, I'm, I'm gonna forget the terminology, but in the leadership classes I've been in where. They divide you into groups, and there's fifty people in a room, and you go over here with five people, or maybe six, eight different groups, and you put your topics on there. On the wall, and then you take all them, and you pick the top, you vote on them, and then you put them together, and you pick the top. It does it all.
Sticky circles.
Yeah, yeah.
Webbing, brainstorming.
I can't remember.
It was, it's strategic, interesting, it's strategic planning.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but that's it for me. Oh, hey, guys, if you get a chance though, um, I was telling Andrew about it yesterday. There's a new city directory, and it, it talks about a lot of things that are in Meeker County as well as Litchfield. And I happen to be getting my tire fixed at Binsfield, and I walked in to sit down on the thing while I was waiting, and there it was. It's a little booklet, all of your pictures are in there. I didn't, yeah, I, I hear you there, I saw mine too, but, um, it really does, it talks about all of our parks, um, all the different things within. This area.
Did the city publish this, or where did it come from?
That's the weird thing, I, I asked Andrew, I said, did you guys get it in the newspaper? But it was produced by the Independent Review.
Oh, a paper booklet, like a thicker pamphlet, just a paper booklet, okay.
Where'd you sit, Senex?
Oh, I was at Binsfield.
Oh, Bins.
I was just sitting in there waiting, and there it was, so I'm gonna stop, Andrew suggested, um, stopping at the chamber, I could probably get one, so I'm gonna stop.
Do you get the independent, the paper version? I think I.
But I don't.
We, we get the paper, I think I have one of those at home.
If you buy it on the newsstand, I buy one every week, but I buy it at the newsstand.
Oh, okay.
I didn't get it, so.
I don't know, there is a rebrand.
You go downstairs and read it here.
Local journalism, Steve.
A conservative, what can I say?
I think there's three pages on my dedicated public health.
Okay, yep.
If I'm not mistaken, it was three pages.
Very nice, very nice.
It is, it is very, I, I'm just saying, guys, if you get a chance to look at it, page through it, I think you'll find it interesting.
Good.
That's it. Well, there's nothing further to become before the board, I will, I just have one comment to make. It's not often I get to embarrass a family member publicly, but, um, and that's not an embarrassment, but. My son, Thomas, uh, got engaged over the weekend to his sweetheart from Kimball, unfortunately.
Across the border.
Lauren Livisire, anyway, so. That was, congratulations to those two, good, good couple, great couple, and we're excited for them both, so. And with that, I'll adjourn.